That our last three meetings, it has snowed.
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Good point.
The public's gonna get really upset with us after.
That's why there nobody's coming.
Yeah, we supposed to get a lot?
All right, call the order, the April first two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Long Lake City Council at six thirty P M. Good evening, everyone. Um, all council members are present this evening except for council member Mike Feldman. He is absent with prior notice. Item two is a pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three, mayor's comments, uh, Long Lake news, meeting reviews and updates. Been kind of a quiet last couple of weeks, the spring break, hope those that went on spring, spring break trips enjoyed their time doing that and made it back safely. Other than that, um, uh, this morning, myself and Mayor Toonheim from Orno, we both had, Senator, we kind of gave her information on, talked about those lines, so. About legislature, other business. Good. When it comes to, has occurred in Long Lake meeting two weeks ago. So at that one. Agenda.
Make a motion. Agenda.
The guy. Five agenda items A three on the consent agenda this evening. Any questions for staff regarding items on the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I can make a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye, vote. Okay, okay, excellent, excellent, all right unanimous. All right, item six, open correspondence, open correspondence is an item on the agenda during which the public may address the city council. No formal actions taken by the city council and comments should be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence may, comments may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the date of the meeting. Anyone wish to approach for open correspondence this evening? Okay, and any email submissions?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Great, well with that, move on to item seven A on your regular business, approve the two thousand twenty-five sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project for sewer.
Public Works Director. Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor Minor. Uh, before you tonight, we have a, uh, project before the council for approval for, uh, televising and cleaning sanitary sewer district number one. Uh, sanitary sewer district number one is comprised of a lift station. Uh, we've got about sixteen hundred feet of public and private force mains that, uh, are encompassed in this district, eighty-five manholes, uh, ten thousand five hundred feet of eight-inch clay pipe, um, four thousand two hundred and eighty, or sixty-one eight-inch PVC pipe, roughly two thousand feet of unknown pipe, which we think is PVC, but we will verify that during the televising, it does not reveal the pipe material on the construction plans for that for some reason, so. Um, we can see that is this area right? In here. That was put in nineteen eighty, that's Lindwood Lane. Um, so we're looking at, uh, televising that to see what the material is, also in this portion here, we're gonna be televising this section early because we have a road recon project scheduled here that'll be getting probably July. Um, once we get graduation season passed and, and we can start opening up that roadwork and get that done. So this will be televised early just in case we find any issues that, uh, in the sewer pipe that need to be corrected before we do a new overlay on the street. So that's gonna be right away and then the rest of it will, um, encompass the work, um, probably six weeks from now.
So it's Lindwood and, um.
Green Hill or?
Green Hill is that?
Nope, just Lindwood.
Yeah, Lindwood is that, isn't that the next one over?
It's this one right here.
Yeah.
I guess maybe I pointed at the wrong spot.
What's the striated between the two?
There's a lift station right there. That's force main that runs up the hill from the lift station two and breaks over to gravity on Green Hill going north. It's kind of a goofy way to route the stuff, but that's the way they did it. And it runs down Wayzata Boulevard, back down, um, Heather Lane and then downwards her trail.
So Sean, just to, um, they designed it this way, it seems kinda, um, zigzaggy, is that because of the gravity?
The gravity in the top geographical area of the area. Back then when they laid this force main, uh, there wasn't any other houses in the area, so it was wide open when they did that, so that's why they did what they did. And also, we also have some concerns about this area right here where it goes underneath the railroad tracks. We haven't, uh, most typically egg or, uh, pipes will start to egg shape over time if they're underneath, uh, railroad tracks. So we'd like to, we're gonna televise this area before we clean it to make sure that we can get our jetter through there and then we'll jet it and then televise it again, so. It makes sense to make sure it's, uh, we can get through there before we do much more works, but, uh, um, it's been over twenty years since this has been put in, so we need to investigate to make sure everything is still flowing the way it should be in that area.
What would you do if that, um, pipe was failed underneath the railroad?
We'd have to put one beside it.
But you can do that under tracks?
Yeah. There's, we're hoping there's a casing there. Um, I haven't had time to really look in the, back into the plans, it's a mind dot plans and it's about this thick.
I'm assuming there would be, but.
I'm assuming that there's a casing there, but we don't know that for sure.
Well, it goes under twelve also, right?
Correct, correct.
So that, yeah, that could be.
When we went across up here on phase two, there was wooden cribbing that supported the road bed above the pipe, believe it or not. I got pictures of it where they had put wooden, wooden cribbing above the pipe and then filled it full of sand. Construction practices have modernized since then, so hopefully we're, uh, got steel pipe underneath that, uh.
Oh, that would have been like, what, twenty years ago or something?
Correct, twenty years ago.
If that needed to be replaced, would there be some responsibility from the railroad to participate in that?
No. No, it's our pipe and we're on their property and, uh, matter of fact, we pay yearly to have that pipe laying on their property.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
For every connection, so every time it crosses, you pay.
There's a reason for every one that goes across that we pay every year.
Well, we only have one that goes across, right?
Two, there's another one right up here.
You pay Martha Lane.
Yeah.
Um, that's a neat map, I haven't seen that before, so is that, so I remember seeing this out there.
Yes, you gotta start with, uh, the shiny Cadillac here. We've had this about ten minutes. Whereas other cities had it for many, many years, we're kinda showing it off today, so we're kinda killing two birds with one stone. We've got all our infrastructure on there.
Is that on the website or is it?
Nope, this is in-house. And, um, we got all our infrastructure on there, we, we do have some things that are missing. You know, it's a, it's a document that's living and, um, we're for, we're always changing it, adding on. We got some water main over here that needs to be added on, that never got on and.
The green is what?
Green is storm sewer.
So are you doing this all in conjunction with WSB like?
So right now, we're using this G I S programming to have the guys go out in the field, taking this with them, if we can zoom that in some, Jeanette, that would be appreciated. We can click on different fittings, different manholes, hydrants, you name it, we can put it on there. I'm currently working with WSB to, uh, when these guys are out in the field doing all this, uh, preventative maintenance work where they can do asset management on this, which is the next phase, where we can start writing down what we've done, when we've done it, why we did it, we currently don't have that function in this mapping, but we're adding it on.
So you won't have to wonder what?
We won't wonder, we won't have to go back and look at paper maps. We're trying to jump in here with both feet on this, so.
Why are you talking about the ability to add notes in the future, by the way? I actually have been using this a lot for planning and zoning, um, because you can actually use a ruler and draw and get an idea of how arid a property is from its lot lines. So as I'm getting all these calls about possible additions and such, it's become a really, really useful tool for me to use. But I have noticed that, yeah, there's no ability to add notes, if there were an ability to add notes that were both available to you and to me, that would be really wonderful.
So that's going, actually met with WSB last Friday just on that discussion and they're working on, see what they can do to provide that for us.
But those are G I S lot lines, right? Are those exact, I mean?
From the counties?
They're similar to the counties.
Yeah, but I was told they're not like survey kinda lines.
I would agree to that, it's more of a general information type, it wouldn't be, like you say, a survey lot line, you'd have to have a survey done if you were gonna be buying and selling or whatever you need to do.
But for the purpose of getting an estimate?
Yeah, yeah.
It has been really, really useful, not to mention when someone says, what's that thing in my front yard? I've been using this a lot to.
Well, yeah.
Sanitary servant, oh, that's, that's a sewer service, you know, things that I wouldn't normally know without picking up the phone and calling him. Actually, we'll log in and get a better idea in it.
Does the fire department have access to this on their M D Ts?
They've been given the information for hydrant locations a couple of weeks ago, so I'm not sure what they did with it.
Yeah, so they have a different running software that will map this.
These have something similar that would, you could click on a building and get the responsible party phone numbers, water, water shut offs, alarm panel codes.
And I don't know, I, ours is also ten minutes old over at the fire department with the new system, so I don't think they have hardly any of that data in there.
Because it'd be nice to have, so the fire department can have access to like the gas shut off and the water shut off for.
Can you stop there a second?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask about that pipe that comes out into the lake there. I, I've seen that, um, and I don't know, I would never know where that is bringing storm water from, so that's coming from the other side of the tracks. Down. Oh, okay, so that's coming out of that holding pond, okay.
Interesting. Lot going on there.
So in addition to that, the next phase is we're going to, if you wanna go out to residential part, Jeanette, just kinda push down, go south. Or pull it up. If you zoom in, you'll see a bunch of blue dots on every lot. There's one there and there's one there, one there, that represents a curb stop. That's a generic point right now, what we're going to be doing is we're gonna be GPSing every curb stop and every lot in town to have GPS coordinates for every curb stop.
What's a curb stop?
Curb stop is the shut off that runs from the service line in your house for water.
So it's.
Your water service.
It's a wa, it's a main shut off in your house?
Main shut off that's buried in the ground partially.
On the yard in the right of way.
So why, why do you want that just?
Because state law requires anything new to be GPSed.
Oh, okay.
With the population over ten thousand people, starting twenty twenty-five and starting in twenty twenty-six, all others have to be on board.
Oh, okay.
So we figured we'd just do the whole town.
Wow, yeah.
So this is not the shut off in your house?
No, this is a shut off in your front yard, right on the edge of the right of way.
For example, if, uh, you were very, very knobby on your utility bill, we needed to disconnect you, it's the curb stop we would use to do that.
Okay, so it's out by the, close to the curb or?
It's on public property.
I was just seeing the dots being in the middle of the house, so.
Right, cuz that's just a generic point in time where they just put that, but we, we currently will take a stick out there and GPS every single one. And.
Then the dot will move.
The dot will move accordingly.
Well, thanks for being proactive.
Yeah, that's very cool. We look at downtown, um, Jeanette, Panera Downtown, I think, curious, curious what's going on over there.
So, um, Sean, I kinda, my recollection was there was some question about maybe some I N I or some, uh, water loss in, uh, district one?
That's what we're working on today.
Okay.
Kinda got sidetracked.
Well, look at the blue dots.
Thank you for keeping us on track, Charlie.
No, I didn't mean it that way, but yeah.
Were there any surprises when you saw this, like, wow, didn't, didn't realize that or?
Well, there isn't had been any really surprises with this, however, I did have a few surprises meeting with the Department of Health on wellhead protection, uh, ten-year extension. If you scroll down just a bit, Jeanette, there was one big surprise that I wasn't aware of is go towards the lake park by the boat ramp.
Up, not down, there we go.
Right in that area, Hefen County had a well. And they used it to augment the lake.
Really?
Yep, and it was sealed in nineteen ninety-one.
So I've seen old maps that show. I've.
No.
I've seen old maps that show an aquifer there, is that?
That could be part of it, that could be part of it.
And I, I thought I've seen one at the other end of the lake too, but, um, I, I know I've seen one kind of in that location.
Well, they further went to tell me there was thirteen of them on Lake Minnetoka at one time too.
Wow.
Um, they're, they're having a little bit of an is history or an issue trying to find history on the initial well one, which would have been where City Hall here.
To the left.
Where is it?
Right there, decked there, right there. So original well one would have been right in here. And they don't have any records of that, asked me if I had any records of it and I don't have any, it was drilled in nineteen forty and I don't have any records of that either, so. This area, when they put in the bypass, they took out feet, a feet and feet of fill. So I'm assuming that if there was a well there, they would have encountered it when they were doing all their excavating. But I've never heard anything, I talked to guys that have been here for fifty years and they've never heard of it either, so. So that was about the only surprises that I've seen lately.
Need to see.
So you wanna go back to the district one? You were talking about fiber earlier. I've got, uh, we've got locates for fiber that's going in from Willow over to Shaughnessy in the next couple of weeks. That's the only fiber that I've heard.
Is this the midco?
Have you been contacted by?
No, it was just a locate that came through, through Gopher State One Call.
Okay.
If there was any, that'd be, that would be, uh, county right of way too, so I haven't seen anything more than that.
You might see something.
That's good.
In the short term.
We also had a meet today. They're gonna be redoing, uh, Brown Road from Wayzata Boulevard to County Road Six.
Yeah, I heard that.
So that's gonna be kicking off any minute, so we meet, we met with the contractors today, so as soon as weight restrictions come off, we'll be, they'll be heading on that. I think they're going all the way to the Brown Road Bridge.
Really?
I think.
So right past here?
Yep.
Just resurfacing?
They're gonna be.
Uh, so north of, of one, of Wayzata Boulevard, that's Orno.
Correct.
But south of there is County Road, right?
We don't have any utilities under this stretch, stretch right here, so we're in good shape. They can do whatever they want.
All right, well, needs to know you show us the.
So that's kind of our Cadillac version of our new G S mapping.
Very nice.
Um, it's light years where we were even a year ago, so.
Oh, is it, is, is it mapped to our, we have connections in Or, to Orno residents, are those on here as well already or is that a future project?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Charlie.
So don't we supply water to Hackberry and other neighborhoods in Orno? Are, have those been plotted out on the map?
That's a good question, if you go over by the church off of, uh, Willow and see if that's there.
Sorry, Jeanette, we're making you.
All the shaded spots is Orno on this map, that's the s, Orno along Lake City Limits.
Okay, so it's.
It looks like there's something there.
Down farther south, I saw a red one going that way, but.
The line half.
Coming in.
It's got a, like, the interconnect on.
There's the sewer.
Okay, so.
That runs to the Water Town Road Lift Station.
This must make your job easier cuz you can just log on and see whether.
It's right at my desk, I don't have to.
Flipping through paper.
Toggle back and forth.
All right. All right, thanks.
Is this available for anybody to see or is it?
Not yet. So if you wanna scroll back over to district one, Jeanette, if there's any questions that the council had on that.
And where we stop, nobody there.
What are the dates you guys are gonna be televising or looking at it?
Well, we're gonna be doing Lindwood in the next, probably the next ten days, cuz we need to know that information as soon as possible before we start ripping that road up, but the rest of it'll probably be June.
The rest of?
District one.
And district one is?
District one is pretty much right here.
Okay.
Or this map that I provided in the packet.
So just, I know this is an off question, but how much do we think of, um, uh, loss was being in district one?
I don't know, cuz a lot of it's gravity, I can't capture that number. I don't know, if you kinda read my memo, if you wanna scroll that in or zoom that in some, Jeanette.
To which location?
District one. Take everything off except for the sanitary sewer. Push her over a little bit more.
You can probably minimize that map layer thing by, if you wanted to, but.
Get all the district one in there.
Right.
So like I said, we'll be doing this part, portion in advance of the rest of it. Once we get it all televised, we'll look at it and then we'll plan a rehab course for the whole district and bring it back to council for approval, if there's, I'm afraid there might be some work down in this area. Behind the Southwood Shores Town Homes. Cuz I've seen some water flows along here that I don't like in years past.
There was some discussion of metering those, was that, did that ever come to fruition about?
Metering.
Yeah, the, the I N I.
If we do meter this district, you wanna slide it down a little bit, Jeanette, to Stone Ri, Stone Ridge, we'd have to put a meter in that manhole right there.
Cuz that's when it's going into the Met Council?
If I can hold it without, right there, cuz that's the last manhole before it goes into the Met Council Lift Station. Everything gets combined from this district right here.
Does, does everything through Long Lake go into that lift station, nothing goes like west?
Everything along the lake goes through that lift station.
Where, where does that one go, it looks like it's, is it Heather Lane or?
Which one, John?
There's one that, uh, oh, yeah, that one, there, that ends right there. At least the arrows are going that way.
Arrow needs to go the other way cuz it goes downhill back to Wayzata Boulevard.
So the arrows are pointing the wrong way then?
Yeah, all right, that's a good.
Good catch there.
Yeah, that's engineering.
One note, it is not unusual for cities when they have this tool available, they're using it as an internal tool, with an ability in a lot of circumstances, so. I've, I got a chance to see in other cities not terribly long ago, um, ability to have maybe a little more editing than we have yet, but that may be coming. A public portal is not necessarily the most common because the information in it doesn't always mean as much to the public face as it would to us where we can explain what it is that they're looking at and explain what the layers are and what they do, so it, it's more of an internal tool. Um, I don't know that, if, maybe someday you could look and see if a public portal option is there, but I think that would be set up as a very separate user ID somehow.
I think we could probably develop it as a read only.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking is some sort of a read only and we would have to provide some form of a login or something, but, yeah. I think we'd probably wanna continue to make the most of it and get everything that we can in it first so that we had some, as much confidence as possible that everything was up to date, so.
I, I think the group here might be the, um, portion of the citizens that are the most interested.
Yes, yes.
Probably a small kinda niche group, yeah.
So with that being said, um, that is the project that we're looking at for twenty twenty-five. I had two bidders bid on this and they were within twelve hundred dollars of each other roughly and, um, the low bidder, I don't know if you read the memo, I've had a real hard time trying to stay in contact with them to, to answer my questions and, um, to keep the project moving, so I'm recommending that we move away from them and go with the second bidder of pipe services in the amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, which was twelve hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents above the lowest bid.
Did we use HydroClean before?
We've used both companies before.
One's kind of more local than the other.
Correct, HydroClean used to be based out of Rogers, but they sold, so they're more of a regional company now.
Okay.
So where does the, um, do we budget for this or is this out of, um?
We did budget twenty-five thousand for jetting and televising, so we're about seven thousand dollar deficit on that line item for this year, but I think we'll make it up through the overall budget, we have another line item for, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for capital expense in that, uh, same budget that, uh, I don't feel that we'll use that entire twenty-five thousand on that, so there is some wiggle room that we can, uh, keep the entire budget as a whole within, uh, within the budget, so.
Sounds like we're close.
We're close.
Now it depends on the size and linear feet too, so.
It's very, very hard to estimate a district estimate, estimation on private, uh, with prices and footages and everything else, so we got close.
Okay.
And of course, the results of the televising will do, uh, will be so helpful in identifying any areas where you may be seeing I N I.
My biggest fear is this one right here on this whole district. It's coming from right here.
Identify any necessary repairs to tighten things up a bit.
Why do you think that?
Cuz Christmas Eve I was in here and we had a grease plug right here, it unplugged itself, migrated down the street, plugged itself again right there.
Hmm.
That's just before it goes downwards her trail, so we've had about ten years of discharge from this area right here that I really, we really, really wanna look at really closely.
So what do you, what would you do about that?
We'd have to jet it more often.
I know.
We'd also have to probably put in a better grease trap prevention in there end too.
Right, right, I know, some cities have had like.
Does that add, so if you have that slowing the flow down, then that adds to the I N I because it seeks other, I mean, does that? Does that?
No, it just backs up the sewer in people's houses.
Well, now, right, yeah.
There's that.
I didn't know if that also contributed to the I N I somehow.
No, not really, it just, it, uh.
Adds to the blood pressure.
Builds up on the side of the pipes, it reduces, uh, the circumference of the pipe.
It's like cholesterol.
Correct.
One hundred percent.
Exactly.
But so you think that's birches and that might be?
I know it is, I don't think it is, I know it is.
It's the only thing there.
Yeah. And then also we got, uh, ten sewer only connections along here. And then also we got uh ten sewer only connections along here from our neighboring city.
Yeah, it'd be nice to build that out. It's, you know, next down the road, have WSB build out those connections too, just so we can, we can see them all and.
Right.
And I did speak to uh Mary Tuna this morning about, you know, about our contracts we have going on, our dilemma and that, you know, there's kind of a still very much a commitment there to work with us on to tighten up our eleven or twelve, you know, different contracts we have for sewer connections and stuff, so that could be a nice piece to relate to that.
Because we had talked about maybe metering the incoming flow for the um Orno interconnect that's to the west?
Right.
I'm, I'm not sure which district that is.
I don't know my districts.
So what, did we, have we ever?
That was the one we have already done.
We're still working on that one too.
One thing at a time.
I've got three staff members that are very green too, so.
Well, this is a huge, it was a huge effort.
It's been a big effort, yes. Alright.
Bye everybody.
Well, this is any other questions?
So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve um as it was noted in the report here.
I can make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project for Sewer District One awarding the project to Pipe Services Corporation?
Correct.
Sean, it could be Minnesota. Anticipated cost thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Okay, so motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favors, uh signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, thank you Sean.
Before I take this down, are there any other areas you might be curious?
Can you put the storm sewer back up?
One other item, the water tower is scheduled to be washed in May. So that's on the books too.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
Washed inside and outside?
Just the outside.
Are they, is um, is AT&amp;T still, are there still work going on there?
Actually, we went through a whole weekend without any shutdowns, so we're good for.
Okay. Does that mean there's, they're served, are they done with the project then?
Yeah, I would think so. Um, all the equipment that they removed is gone. Two weekends in a row on, one on a Saturday and one on a Sunday. We just lost cell tower and uh, which kills our well one SCADA system auto dialer that calls us because the antenna's inside the building. Because when this tower goes down, they're relying on other towers to keep up, pick up the slack. Well, our lift stations are on that also, but they're outside, so they got enough strength to grab the signal from the other towers, whereas the one doesn't. And um hopefully this is just an isolated incident and we don't have to do this for another twenty years, so.
Can we put, can we put an antenna outside or something?
We can't do that either because they don't make extensions for the coax. I've already been down this road. Because when it failed, I wanted to put the antenna outside. Well, can you get a six foot extension? Well, I need about sixty feet.
You can't amplify it somehow to.
They tell me no. Our TPC vendor, so on the, we could probably move the whole auto dialer closer to the outside of the wall, but I'm hoping that um the cell phone tower stays up now.
Yeah, it was a project.
Just a kind of a minor rehab project they had done or upgrading that kind of fiddled with our signals, but it hadn't been an issue for the first six months it's been in operation, so, but you can tell exactly when they shut it off.
And washing the tower um versus painting it is, I know.
About four hundred thousand dollars.
I know, but um washing it is gonna do a.
It'll give us an extension for a couple of years until we figure out when we want to paint it and if we want to spend the money, when we want to spend the money to do it, so.
Put our new logo on it?
That'd be the next phase, yep.
Can we do a sticker?
Well, two is ninety-nine percent complete for the upgrading. We're waiting on a new flow meter. The uh digital circuit board for the readout on the old meter short circuited, so where there was numbers, there was letters, and where there was letters, there was numbers and after twenty-five years, it just gave it up. So we're, we ordered a new meter and once that's in, we should be good to go there, so. Um, then we'll start focusing our attention on the other one.
Just for a little fun, um and I, I borrowed your name. Sometimes the search function is still a little bit doggy, but we can search by name or address to get to your specific parcel.
I didn't even know that.
Oh yeah, I've been doing that all, I'm having fun with this. I've been playing in it uh a little more, but yeah, we've got your parcel ID right here. Um, love to see a little more of the legal description populate, so you know, just, we're learning our way through it, but yeah, just for a little fun.
I thought you were gonna tell me I had delinquent water bill.
Right, right.
Big asterisk shows up.
For taxes or something.
You didn't know it says scheduled to be shut off?
You could have done that since it was April first Jeanette.
He has a chance.
Great, that's great.
That's Robert Pauli.
Uh, okay.
So just for a little fun.
But you've never been there before?
I can see it from above now.
Virtually.
Do you, I can see Charlie's house too from my house now because they took down all the trees.
Oh funny.
So when I'm using a ruler function, I can essentially, you know, pop a point here, pop it to here and see, oh, this is twenty-five feet. Well, since side yard setback is ten feet, you probably have room to move, so if you want to do an addition, you will still need a survey, but you, it does look like you have room to move, so it's worth investing some time into.
What doesn't show is in our backyard, it drops off, so you'd be really.
I have a good topographic on here.
You'd have a hard.
Feature on that.
Oh, shoot.
Uh-oh.
Now it's on me.
The layers, anyway.
Yeah, it, it's, you, you need a switchback to get out of that.
I guess the next one over.
You think so?
The left one.
Oh, elevation.
Oh.
See if that does anything. No.
Oh, it took a while, look at that.
Lights are lit up.
Contours.
It's a lot going on there.
Yeah, it's a big hill.
Alright.
It was fun.
Alright, any other updates Sean?
Thank you council, that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Alright, mowers are ready to go for the season and.
Right now, we've got a street sweeper that's having some attention done in Saint Paul this week, so hopefully we can get that back up and running. I can't get the hopper to lift up. Everything worked fine when we put it away last fall, brought it out, and I can't get the hopper to lift up. I tried and tried and tried, so.
Have they looked at it yet?
We sent it in this morning, so I haven't heard.
Did it trailer it all the way out there, I imagine?
We drove it.
You drove, what? You drove the street sweeper to Saint Paul?
It was sixty miles an hour.
Sixty-five down the road.
You didn't go in rush hour, did you?
Really? Nine AM we left. We were back in Long Lake by ten.
Huh.
Oh.
Okay.
Did people get out of your way?
I don't know, I didn't drive the sweeper, I followed it. But it does sixty going down the road, just like a truck.
Okay, I didn't know that. Alright, great. Move on to item seven B, updates regarding fire service discussions. We have this on our, on our agenda. Um, I guess just, yeah, we continue to have really good discussions with, with Orno, with the negotiating committee from the Orno City Council, including uh here late, late last night, I believe, was, so um good, good progress there. I think we're hopeful, both cities are hopeful that we can address, we can address this at our next council meetings. Being April fourteenth for Orno and April fifteenth for, can hopefully approve the, the um kind of contract called the First Amendment to the contract we've been working on, so we'll stay tuned for that. That's the, that's the hope. Uh, it's been pushed back once or twice already, but um hopeful that can be the case, so. Besides that, uh, anything else you can think of?
No, I'd just add that that's been, been a long road, but I think we're close and there's just, in my opinion, there's just a few details to uh work out among the four of us and um, and then we'll bring it to councils.
Great.
Well, good job. I know it's taken a lot of time too.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for saying that. We've spent a lot of time in, in uh City Hall here. So other than that, uh, no major updates, fire service discussions. So with that, move on to item eight then, other, other business. Councilmember newcomer.
Uh, no, everything's good, other than my earlier comment that every time we have a city council meeting, it snows, so we need to, we need to stop doing that.
I know, and it's, it's April first and it seems as though it's snowing April. Great, alright, well, sounds good, John.
I don't have anything.
Alright. Yeah, just an update on the, on our bonding bill request to the um, to the state legislature. I got contacted last week by Representative Myers that uh we have, we're going before a hearing. We have a committee appearance for a committee hearing on Thursday, so I'll be attending that along with City Administrator Weskey and our WSB consultant, I believe. And just doing a little, little testimony. It's a brief, brief deal, you know, five, ten minutes or whatever, and give our pitch and and see what happens from there, so that's in the House. And then uh our Senator um Ann Johnson Stewart has signed something to it. I don't know exactly what that means, but signed something in support of this in the Senate as well. It's a little bit farther than we made it last year with the same kind of pitch. Last year was more of the bonding tour and we didn't have a hearing in the Capitol, so this year we've, we've advanced to have a hearing. And again, this is a fresh start of our, our road reconstruction project for Grand Avenue and adjacent streets, including sewer infrastructure, water, water infrastructure, things like that, so. See where that goes. I mean, it may not, the bonding bill may or may not pass, and um if it does, I mean, it may or may not include this as a, as a final item, but um uh looking more promising than it did a week or two ago.
What's the date of that?
Of the hearing?
Yeah.
Um, Thursday, whatever.
Third.
Third, it's the third, yep.
I might just tag along if I could, just to, from an educational standpoint, just to, I've never.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
Um, I won't go.
Unless there's no quorum, right? You guys are staying home that day?
Yeah. So on that vein, um, I did watch that Orno did um adopt a resolution uh consistent with the L League of Minnesota Cities uh position on the legislation relating to taking away local zoning control. I don't know if, where we stand on that, or if that's something.
Yeah, I've been pretty active on that, like um without a resolution, but knowing, knowing what sort of the consent of our council is, I've been speaking with Representative Myers about that, Senator Johnson, uh Senator Johnson Stewart, and they both know that really every city they represent is opposed to that legislation. And a little bit of an update that I received from Senator Johnson this morning that it's not looking like that legislation's gonna be successful this second session, so I think it's too soon to, to, you know, start uh celebrating, but it's uh, it's not as in good of a place as it was a week or two ago, so. And as far as passing, which is what most of us out in this, in these are hoping for, as far as, we brought up all the issues and a, and a group of mayors, myself, and there's eleven or twelve other mayors and heard her uh Senate district, for example, sign a letter of opposing legislation. That seems to have made an effect on, on her and O and others as well, so. See what that takes us, but yeah.
Because when I looked at it, I wasn't sure who was sponsoring it. It seemed like it was somewhat sponsored or advantageous to builders, a builder organization?
Correct. It's kind of a weird, uh, unique hodgepodge of sponsors. It's been, it's some very much outstate Republicans legislators and then some very entering suburb um DFL representatives and senators, so it's uh, and, and the Minnesota Builders Association is sort of one of the, one of the folks driving the, they're driving as well as, you know, folks looking for more housing for homeless uh people, which is, or, or people that need housing, and that's, you know, great too, but it's just cities are working on that and trying to do it in other ways, and it's kind of challenging to be able to plan for that with all of the infrastructure needs and, you know, there's, there was, there was something I saw where one of the bills was in an industrial area, I over hear that uh you, a developer could build an up to seventy-five foot tall apartment complex, condominium complex.
With no parking, right? When there was no parking restrictions on either.
Exactly.
Or they could do it next to a residential.
You also have to allow apartments in single-family residential districts, so, I mean, there these bills, and, and this has happened a couple of years in a row really now, but these bills take away the ability, I feel, of a city to represent, A, its own awareness of its own needs. I mean, we have fairly recently implemented uh, you know, the pavement management fund to enable um more active road projects and reclamation projects, but there are roads out there that uh, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to add to apartment buildings on Grand Avenue right now. Though the level of impact that, that traffic would have on that roadway would be terrible, and we wouldn't be in a position to be able to really do anything about it. And, and so it's not just about what's in your backyard too, but it's about the infrastructure that supports what's in your backyard. Yes, exactly. They're so.
Why have a comp plan?
Exactly, exactly.
Why, why, why mess around with Thrive Twenty-Fifth? It doesn't mean anything.
We have adopted a resolution um it to be responsive to bills in a prior year. I don't think it was last year, maybe the year before. If there is a time where the council would like me to pull that back up and put that back on an agenda being, you know, with some updates to reflect the current legislation numbers and such, we could certainly do that. But yeah, this, this legislation really, it, it has such a damaging ability, I think, on the character of small communities and neighborhoods and doesn't allow for you to represent the residents and, and protect what they love most about their communities and, and be mindful of it more than anything else. I could see a situation where you require that in single-family districts and you're required to allow single and two-family. But to say you could put a, you know, huge apartment building in the middle of the block on Inglewood Street, it, it just, it, it, it does defy logic for, for this small town. It, it, and for many small towns, it's.
Right. Yep, yep, so yeah, that was a good point. I forgot to mention that uh last meeting that, that letter went out and so, seems to be successful, but there's next year, it'll be, it'll continue to come back year after year until eventually something, something occurs. There's some concepts about trying to create more, create more incentives for cities who, you know, have the ability to want to do that and that sort of thing, and help them with infrastructure improvements and things like that, but requiring it is own on a story.
Particularly when you, incentives like give you an idea of where you want to place it as opposed to like, uh, is this driven by um good zoning, or is this driven by profit or like money or like, you know, because they, they, the city can't say we'd like to put it here. The builders say where they want to put it.
Yep, and there's, and people can come and, and sit, fill up our city council chambers all they want, and there's nothing we can do about it. We have to have a hearing, but there's really no decision-making that would occur. The way those bills are written, we would just have to if it meets the administrative requirements, we'd have to approve it as, as a city, so.
It's also interesting to note that we are a community that does have some affordable housing rental units. I mean, Hillside Terrace is a great example of that, but they're not necessarily full. Uh, I've been hearing from Mandy that uh some, some of those projects, their occupancy rate is down right now.
Wow.
And so I'm just if, if the goal is to incentivize development of new affordable housing, um, I'm, I'm not sure that that's entirely the approach that's warranted.
That's too bad that, because that's a nice neighborhood. I know where you're talking because it's close to me.
Alright, anything else, Teardrop?
Oh, um.
Oh yeah, don't tell us the best.
The LMCC, we did have a meeting of the executive committee and before the executive committee was uh to approve a franchise agreement with Midco. And we did uh approve it, and so Long Lake is on the list, on the first list uh to, for the build out for uh fiber.
Nice, that's awesome. You might start laying things out later this year?
Yeah.
Wow, that's great.
So when would, when would it be available for residents to have that as an option?
You know, I don't really know. I mean, I think they're optimistic that they're gonna start um construction in um two thousand twenty. You know, I don't really know, I mean, I think they're optimistic that they're gonna start um construction in um two thousand twenty-five for Long Lake, but Sean, you have not heard anything?
I've just heard one small project along Wayzetta Boulevard, but I'm not even sure who's doing it, so.
Okay, well, then.
Now, as if they're building out Orno and then, you know, near future, you'd think it makes sense and they'd do Long Lake at the same time since we.
Yeah, and Independence has been built, some of it has been built out, um, and so the, I think they'll move east, like, Independence, I think it was, I'm trying to remember, Loretto? Might, I might be wrong, I think, there were about four communities.
Okay.
In the list.
That's great.
We can certainly keep council posted when railway permits eventually come through, cause they would have to be pulling permits without work.
Okay, that'd be great.
Still pretty early yet on our construction season, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
And this was last Thursday that we approved it, so.
Nice job, that's great.
So they're not that fast.
Right, takes some time. All right, Scott?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, and Sean, anything else?
I've said my piece.
Got it, got it. And Jeanette, last but not least, I know you've got at least one good update for us, involves uh food and a truck.
Oh, yes, I do. Um, we, I, I had started doing a little bit of advertising of our nineteen oh five Wayzetta Boulevard property um as a potential site to welcome food truck reservations, and within two days after posting on Facebook, I had a reserve, a twenty-one day reservation for a truck to locate on the property. Um, the gentleman who booked it also um expressed an active interest in working with us on small improvements we could make that would actually make it even more enticing operationally um to food trucks, something as simple as putting in an electric service, for example. Um, putting in an electric service would save them hundreds of dollars a day, basically, okay, so, um, or throughout their cycle. So there, it, it's, it's, it was kind of interesting to have that dialogue, where he was sharing, if you put this in, they will come. So it was um a really nice open dialogue. We have our first twenty-one day booking to begin sometime in June, I think we might have some discussions and explore a thing or two. This is new information to Sean, but it's a little.
Well, the box is right there.
What box?
The big electrical transformer box.
Yeah, that's gonna be in County Streetlights, I don't think you wanna be in there.
I totally remember where the power was for the gas station.
Yeah, where was the power?
Right in the middle.
It was underground there somewhere.
It was right in the middle. So it was, it ran, I think, from Wayzetta Boulevard to the back corner, didn't it run by the, the car wash?
The car wash, yeah.
So there isn't anything underground now there?
I don't think so, it's probably dead end underneath the sidewalk.
Yeah, I thi- I think that's a good idea, though. Yeah, I mean, cause you, uh, otherwise you're running generators and it's the noise and you smell, you're trying to eat food and there's.
Cocaine, whatever for cooking too.
It is a very small thing that would be very enticing, but of course, we would have to do some looking into what that would actually be.
And the cost.
And the cost, I will say that a food truck booking for a full twenty-one day reservation, that was six hundred and twenty-five dollars, so.
We can put that money aside in a fund or something and just build up for.
And if we got three of those, you know?
EDA could, EDA would have money to do that.
Yes.
So can you, if we sold the property with um some electrical, would that help sell it?
More than likely, you're just gonna run into a side, you know, so it's not through the middle, you can just kind of piggyback off of one so that they can line up in a certain spot, run extension cords, it's not gonna be more than a pedestal with four pence.
Right, but you'd probably put a couple of pedestals.
I have no idea what the scope's gonna be.
Depending on.
Getting larger, the more we talk about it.
Pedestal's more expense, running the wire, so I mean, you'd, you'd have to see where you come off.
We have EDA funds that we can use for that.
Yeah.
He sent us a photo of an example of the easiest junction box in the world that they, they put it through, it is.
Is it a local food vendor?
Um, yes, actually, well, local in the sense the truck's based out of Eden Prairie, but they've been in Wayzetta before. It's called Butcher and Bartender, has a pretty cool menu, so, so, yeah.
So will it be twenty-one continuous days, or will they chop it up?
It'll be, it's, it's, it's a schedule that I have, it won't be twenty-one straight.
So it'll be like weekends or something, or?
More than likely, I, I do have all the dates and I can share that information. I will actually be putting that information up on our Facebook page.
And do we have, do we, can we have more than one food truck there?
Yes, we can have up to three on the property, which is all the more reason why, if installing power was affordable.
Yeah.
Uh, or reasonable, um, it is much more likely to be enticing.
What, what limits it to three?
Our policy, and not just that, but um you have to be cognizant of traffic movement, um.
Parking.
Parking, wires, uh, maybe tossing a bunch of picnic table, or a couple of picnic tables up there eventually.
Yeah, three's a reasonable number for that size lot.
Yeah.
I, I think it's, it's great, it allows a little space, uh, but also allows a little room for traffic and gesturing movement in a safe way, so. In my head, I started pipe dreaming about if this turned out to be successful, put a little bike rack down there, a little power pole. Maybe three picnic tables. Just keep it small, but, and then we'd still be able to use the lot for snow storage all winter long. It could be a great thing to, to put it to that kind of use for a couple of years, but it's a whole other conversation about, about that, so. Let's just be brainstorming out loud.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. All right, good update, thank you. Anything else, Jeanette?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Great, last call, any other? All right, so our next meeting is on the fifteenth, April fifteenth, I believe, Councilmember Feldman will be back at that time, and everybody else can be around that evening as far as we know, at this point, okay? Great, and we will have a, yeah, we will have a uh closed session that night, a work session, including a closed session that night, it's kind of the plan. I don't know if our city attorney is, is confirmed his availability or not, but that's the plan. All right, so if there's no objections, all during the meeting, by general consent, hearing done, meeting's adjourned, seven twenty-seven PM.